Good evening. It's now 6:00 PM and we'll begin our June meeting of the City of Carrollton Mayor and Council, if I can call to order, and if you will stand and have pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, if you'll remain standing, we'll have Councilman Bridges to do our invocation.
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you, Lord God, for this day. Thank you for waking us up this morning, our right minds, in our health and strength, dear heavenly Father. As we go forth through this night, for this meeting, that everything will be done to glorify you and not us. Lord, I pray for this community. I always pray for unity in our community, that we can come together using new ideas together uniquely, can bring a foundation to this community so we can work together. I pray that we do all things and everything in your will and in your way, and I would just like to thank everyone for coming out here tonight and should be a blessing to the city council meeting. I would like to pray for all the sickness and all the deaths in our community, Lord God, that you give them strength, Lord God, and you just nurture them right now, Lord God, where you see fit. And I pray for this city, council, Lord God, and the mayor, that we continue to work as a team in unity to be an effort to unify our community with the way we lead the city. These are all of the blessings in your Son, Jesus Christ's name I do pray. Let every heart say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Bridges. Okay. At this time, we'll have citizens' comments. Mr. Triflett?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to request Annette Boykin, 503D Elder Circle, to come to the podium and speak.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's been a while since I've been here, but it's good to see everybody. You know, it's been the last two years has been COVID-19 and everything else. So I thank God for being here, and I didn't come to be rude or mean or angry or complain or nothing. All I've come for is to say that I do, I am a part of this community. I volunteer. I volunteer from my heart, and I just want everybody, y'all can hear me? I want everybody to know, even in these last couple of months, I have soul-searched my own heart to see, you know, what am I doing wrong? So I am and want to be a part of this great change in this community, and like Sister Bridges said, you know, we got a good foundation. We want to be Carroll County. We want to be looked at as how did y'all dot the dots and do everything and come together and make it seem better for all people, all people. I could sit here and complain about some things, but I want to be called on and looked at, not like, here she come, what's she gonna do today? What's she gonna say today? What's she angry about today? I'm not angry. I'm not bitter, but I'm ready to see change. All y'all have a good night, and it's just good to be here because we're all here only, only by God's grace and mercy. So, we are gonna come together. We're gonna dot our dots. We're gonna have a table talk where we all can agree to disagree, but try to make Carroll County a better place for all people. Affordable homes, I can go on the west side and see a new change, just like I do on Dixie Street. It is just so much, but we're gonna do this together, and I'm telling you, all hands on deck.
Thank you, Ms. Annette. Thank you for what you do in the community.
Can everyone here okay?
Yeah, we're good.
At this time, I'd like to request Ariel Nix, 137 Glendale Boulevard, Temple, Georgia, to approach the podium, please.
I know that tonight is the budget proposal for the next fiscal year. Right now, the amount of funding allocated towards the police is, and I'm just rounding these numbers here, about $9 million. More than any other budget item, and an almost million-dollar increase from last year's total. I'm not an accountant, but I recognize that budgets are a reflection of priorities, and I think there's a lot of misrepresentation of what calls to defund the police are. Defunding the police involves reallocating funding to various social services and community programs, such as affordable housing, food security, mental health resources, education, rehabilitation, et cetera. Policing is merely an expensive Band-Aid solution to public safety that ignores the root causes of crimes and in many cases criminalizes people in financial or medical distress instead of investing in tangible solutions to those problems. Shouldn't the health and happiness and needs of the people in our community be our main priority? It has been almost an entire year, and I've watched and listened as people came to these meetings and voiced their concerns surrounding the topic of affordable housing, and everyone wore like purple ribbons for a month and claimed concern, but I just wanna know if any of you can confidently say that there's been any progress made on that topic? And I just wanna urge you to rethink the budget and imagine what kind of change could be made if we reinvested that million dollars, much less the other eight million, back into the community. So many possibilities for a more equitable future. I'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I actually have somewhere else to head. So thank you for your time, and I will be here next month.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. We have the minutes from the May meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt those? Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Is there any questions, additions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We're gonna deviate just a little bit from this agenda, and if I can have a motion to go ahead and approve the agenda items for consideration with moving item 11 up to item 1, and then we'll have the mayor and council and the city manager's announcements at the end.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion? Have a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Smith is our city attorney, and he's going to explain the resolution 04-2021, the Valdosta Housing Authority bond issue.
Madam Mayor, before we take up the resolution and the council, there was a hearing noticed for tonight at 6:00 PM-
I'm sorry.
-for public comments on this point. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak with respect to the bond issue that was noticed for the purpose of renovating, in part, for renovating the Carrollton Club Apartments on Cedar Street? Is there anyone that wishes to speak on that point? If not, then that hearing would be adjourned.
Thank you.
Now, if you'd like to-
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do the bond issue.
As I was explaining just now, the bond issue that is being done by the Valdosta Housing Authority is a, for our purposes, a part of a larger bond issue that is used to renovate a number of projects across the state. It's not being issued by the Carrollton Housing Authority, but it in part is used to benefit the renovation of the Carrollton Club Apartments, which is a senior project on Cedar Street that's been here for approximately 25 years, and they're going through a round of renovations. So the purpose of this resolution is to indicate whether or not the city approves of that, that action on the part of the Valdosta Housing Authority.
And this is no cost to the city. This is just us approving and basically supporting their efforts to renovate those projects.
That's correct. It does not pledge any of the faith and credit of the city nor of the Carrollton Housing Authority.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 04-2021, the Valdosta Housing Authority bond issue?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a second? Is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay. Our next item of business is our county commission chair, Ms. Michelle Morgan, is here to introduce our new E-911 director.
Good evening. It's really nice to see all of y'all in person once again in this kind of setting. I'm very excited. Clay Patterson is the new E-911 director. I think about going on two months now. Sorry, time flies. We're having fun, isn't it, Clay? But anyway, I'm just very, very excited with all the new things coming. Clay is very young, or he looks it, but what's exciting is we've got somebody who is coming with new ideas, has what a newer generation's gonna be needing, as well as he identifies with the needs that my generation needs. He has a very wonderful path that he'll talk about, how he got to be, where he is. My main reason for choosing him also was when I was flipping through his job recommendation, Steve Taylor, he's the sole commissioner for Bartow County, has been a very good mentor to me these last few years, and he has worked for Steve Taylor. So that just kind of put everything in a nice circle for me, in a nice package. So, Clay, I'm gonna turn it over to you to talk about your, where you're from, your resume, and then just a little tidbit that Betty's gonna be real excited to hear about.
Good evening. Thank y'all for having me. So, I grew up in Harrelson County. I graduated from Harrelson County High School. As a matter of fact, I just seen one of my good friends from school, I graduated with Ed, one of your IT members. And directly out of high school, I became a police officer, and I got recruited to the Cartersville area, and I've spent the majority of my adult life there, working for the sheriff's office and another small police department. Been a police officer now for 14 and a half years, certified since I was 18 years old. I've been blessed to do multiple different things that someone my age probably had no business being a part of, but it probably just, I feel like it blessed me and has matured me in multiple different ways. Served as a police chief. I was thrown in that position for about an 18-month period, and then worked my way up to sergeant. And the majority of my career was involved with patrol and training and instructor in multiple different fields, including communication. Finally went back to college, got my bachelor's degree from Reinhart. I'm one semester away from finishing my master's in communication studies at Alabama, and I will not say Roll Tide, but they just have a good master's program, so.
Mr. Jim may backhand you sitting here.
So I did, when I graduated college, I ran Waffle Houses for about eight months. I thought that I, I just followed the money signs, and, but I didn't enjoy it. So I came to work for Carroll County Sheriff's Office, and it's been my goal to move into a position and something along these lines my entire career. And so I put in for this position, wanting the experience of the interview process, and I have been blessed and was appointed to it on February the 26th. But, we are making a lot of changes, but they're positive and good changes. I mean, and first, I wanted to say too, I've been excited to talk to Carrollton because I wanted to thank the city for being, for always being so, even though I wasn't around, obviously y'all have always been supportive in the advancement of public safety and their technology and things, and because of that, when we go live with our new CAD very soon, I won't give you a date because then I'll be held to it, and we're running into problems, and you know, it's just with technology, with going live, but it will be soon. So Carrollton, we're gonna use Carrollton first, and they're gonna be our guinea pigs because they're so easy to work with and, and the public safety arena is so already up to date with technology, so that's gonna help us out. And I think one thing the chairman is talking about is I just got back from the Directors' Academy last week. It was the very first one in the state of Georgia, and I got to be a part of that. I was one of 14 directors in the state that got to go, and I got a lot of information and a lot of knowledge, and so I came back this week, and we also implemented a system on last Tuesday, the chairman hasn't even got to see yet, that improves caller location accuracy. So before this, we were able, someone called 911, we were able to, you won't know this term, but phase to their location to 1,000 meters or more, sometimes a half a mile if they didn't know where they were at. And now, if someone calls 911 from a cellphone, we're able to locate their location within four meters on Google Maps.
Amen.
Now, again, that's for someone calling from a working cellphone. You know, we can also tell the level of a, if they're in a four-story hotel, it'll, it'll tell me they're on the second floor. And so that company's partnered with Uber and Chick-fil-A and places like that, and so there's a lot of great benefits to it. But the most impressive thing that the chairman's been excited about is that I just left the post office about an hour and a half ago and sent out certified letters to the, all the cellphone carriers to start the implementation of texting 911.
Amen.
Yes.
They have 180 days to respond to me, and I've got a calendar on my desktop, so if they don't, then we'll send more. But they have to, that was also gonna cost the county a large chunk of money, but because of my connections that I met last week, I was able to get it for, it's, right now, in the future, I have a feeling they will charge us, but it went from about an $18,000 cost to zero. So hopefully, within about 200, 250 days, we'll be live with that as well.
Awesome.
So, for the reporters, please don't put in the paper that someone can text the 911 yet. We are starting the implementation process, because I do not want someone to need help and try to text and not get an answer.
Awesome.
But, multiple things we could talk about, but y'all've got a long agenda, and so, but my door's always open. Y'all are more than welcome to come by at any time if you have any questions.
Well, Clay, I want to say welcome, and Clay and I have already had some meetings together and with our mental health advocacy program, and this 911 system with the, able to identify where people are, you know, when they're calling in, is just awesome. And then texting, I know with some people, that's a mixed bag, but I mean, if you're in a dangerous situation, you don't wanna call up 911 and say, you know, I'm calling, and then the other people hear you calling 911. So now, and I know Michelle talked about her age group, and I'm a few days older than her, even for my age group, that would be, be an awesome thing to be able to do, is to text 911 instead of having to make that phone call. And Clay, I just commend you. I got onto him a minute ago. He's, he's hit the ground running, and he's running 14 hours a day, and he can't do that. So he's, he's an ambitious young man, and I, I know our public safety enjoys working with you, and we look forward to a great relationship, and he's helped us with our mental health mobile crisis unit, so.
I don't know if you, if you know, but I got put on the advisory board.
Yeah, I did. I was listening to that.
Oh, you were, yes.
I was on there, all right. But welcome, and thank you for coming. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan, for bringing him. Okay, our next item is a resolution. I don't know if any of you were present. I think it was May, the week of May 13th, 14th, 15th. If you went over toward the high school in any direction, you saw a lot and lot of people, and hopefully businesses around town saw lot and lots of people. We had the state track meet here, and from the track meet, we have our Carrollton winners here from our recreation. So when everybody gets in, I'll read the proclamation. Yeah. I know we got some proud parents back there. And I see our proud recreation director coming in back there, Ms. Julie Ivy.
Can you help me?
Yeah.
Wow. Bless you, bless you. Bless you.
Bless you.
Look at me.
It's just mom and dad. Yeah. For those of you that don't know them, I'd like to introduce our recreation director, Julie Ivy. Wave, yeah? And, good. And Mr. John Lang. These people work really, really hard with our children and have done a great job in training and working with them, and our hats off to them. At this time, I would like to read a recognition for the Carrollton Parks and Recreation Track and Field Team, the 2021 Georgia Recreation and Parks Association state champions. Whereas, it gives the mayor and council a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to express to all the players, coaches, and parents of the Carrollton Parks and Recreation Track and Field Team our sincere congratulations for qualifying and competing in the 2021 GRPA State Track and Field Competition. Whereas, the 100 athletes that competed this season with Coach Aura Greshchism and Coach Bradley McLester had a stellar year amid uncertainty and had to practice high levels of discipline and preservation due to COVID-19. And whereas, the team had 62 individuals, along with 10 relay teams qualify for the Georgia Parks and Recreation Association Track Meet, 41 of them placed in the top eight in their individual events. And whereas, 19 individuals, along with six relay teams, earned a medal by placing in the top three places. And whereas, Carrollton had a record 15 GRPA state championships, 11 individuals, and four relay teams crowned. Now therefore, we're pleased to publicly recognize the following first-place winners of the 2021 GRPA State Track and Field Competition. All right. When I call your name, just raise your hand so we can figure out who you are. Dash Bracken, Kason Copeland, Con Crowder, Shane Davis, Ariana Dobbin, Riley Favors, Kamara Gill, Jaden Harris, Camp Jennings, Deja, John, she's not here, okay. Patience Mahone, Tamara McKinney, Ella McQuirter, Peyton Moore, Delonte Pearson, Jalen Rooks, Zylan Thomas, Leila Virgin, Grayson Walt All, and Jayce Walton. And if I butchered your name, I apologize. For their fine efforts, I proudly present this certificate as an expression of our admiration, signed the 7th day of June 2021. Okay, gang, let's go.
Thank y'all very much.
On behalf of the owner of the Cool Roofing Company. And he just wanted me to be here, I guess, to see if they could be rezoned even if it continues to operate as a roofing company now. Is that a consideration? Because I don't think he's prepared to do the updates at the moment.
Okay. Patrick, do you?
I did not hear.
Oh, okay. All right.
Do you believe that he can do that? However, if you'll remember in the original zoning application, he did state that he would continue to operate his current roofing business.
Mr. Attorney?
I believe, you know, I've only been doing this for a few months too, so I'm not that familiar with the history, but my, my understanding was that once the rezoning took place, then the conditions kicked into play.
Okay.
So, I, I don't believe that you would rezone it with conditions and not require the applicant to immediately adhere to those conditions.
Okay. All right.
I don't know how we would police that. I don't know when we would know to trigger it, so I don't know how to keep up with that.
Okay.
And one other just housekeeping thing, we need your name and address for this hearing. We need to know your name and address since you spoke.
This is Dusty Henry.
Okay.
It's nine one zero nine, Highway one six six, Winston, Georgia, three oh one eight seven.
Thank you.
I've got a question. Does, is, is it, he's just undecided about the used car lot? Or, I'm kind of wondering why he's coming in asking for rezoning and doesn't have plans to?
Well, it was previously zoned at C two and then it automatically, I don't know what, I personally do not know why it was rezoned to C three or when it was, but future references, if you were to sell it, it would, if it was rezoned and if the previous person were to buy it and want to do that also, I don't know, because at this time, he isn't prepared to do all the updates.
Can we table it?
You could do either, or you could give him the opportunity to withdraw it, but I, if, since he's not here to make that decision, it would seem that the appropriate thing to do would be simply to table it.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to table this until such time that the owner, I'm sorry, name is David Henry, can be present?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a second? Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. And what this does, Mr. Henry, is it doesn't deny it, it just, will just table it until such time that he can figure out, you know, when he would be able to do it and those kind of things. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next request is annexation and rezoning requests for eleven thirty-one Bankhead Highway from Carroll County Commercial to C two General Commercial.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This item for your consideration this evening is an annexation and rezoning. The applicant, Richard Culpepper of Culpepper Development, is requesting annexation and rezoning of one point six two acres located at eleven thirty-one Bankhead Highway and further identified as tax parcel one three two zero one one eight from Carroll County jurisdiction to C two General Commercial. The applicant is requesting rezoning to establish a multi-tenant commercial development. Additionally, the petitioner is requesting a waiver of section four point zero two point zero two to allow more than one parking aisle between the building and the roadway, and a waiver from section five point zero four zero four to allow two freestanding signs per lot to accommodate the new proposed development and the existing cross structure that is currently on the property. The existing structure will be removed from the proposed development. They have submitted a concept plan that shows the tract being split into two parcels to accommodate two commercial buildings. The property is currently zoned commercial in Carroll County. The requested C two general zoning designation allows for the proposed restaurant and retail use. Once the property is annexed, it will be combined with an existing point three two acre track located on the southeast corner of the property, which is already in the city and zoned C two General Commercial. The city's comprehensive plan denotes the area surrounding this site as commercial on the plan's future land use map. Also, existing land uses adjacent to this location to the north is General Commercial or C two, south, C two General Commercial, to the east, C two General Commercial, and to the west, it is a G dot abandoned right of way to the city of Carrollton. This tract is an island of Carroll County and surrounded by the city of Carrollton. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the annexation and rezoning and waiver requests by Richard Culpepper for the one point six two acres located at eleven thirty-one Bankhead Highway from Carroll County Commercial to C two General Commercial. The applicant intends to develop the multi-tenant commercial development, and the following waivers were recommended for approval. I've read those to you before, and it is an eight zero recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Patrick. I know Mr. Culpepper's here, but is there anyone else here to speak either for or against the project? Okay.
I just want to state the obvious, that we're glad to get this in the city. It's one of those county islands, and this cleans up. They're enjoying, the property enjoys all the city services, but they don't pay the city tax, so we're thankful to get this into the city.
All right. Richard, you want to address the council? We're good.
Wendy's.
Thank you. We appreciate what Richard does. He calls me frequently to find land, to help develop, so we, for our city and to bring better quality of life. So, we appreciate that.
Mr. Culpepper, Councilman Ledbetter wanted me to ask what the estimated time of the Dunkin' Donuts opening might be.
Four or five months.
Four or five months, Brett.
Well, we're really hoping for Krispy Kreme, but we'll take Dunkin'.
That is on my side of town. I am excited.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, from my perspective. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Is there any other comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, I mean, I'm sorry, do I have a motion for the annexation and rezoning requests at eleven thirty-one Bankhead Highway?
I so moved that motion.
Okay. All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a second? Any further questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. Our next, yes, sir?
I'm going to need to recuse myself from the discussion on the next item, so.
Okay.
With your permission, I'm going to leave the, leave the room for a minute.
Okay. Richard. Richard. Oh, well, that's okay. He just, he had a question for you. This is, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. Yeah. He's with the city menu? He just had a question for you. Okay. I mean, probably, yeah. Okay. All right. Our next item is a rezoning request for Mapleview Drive from ER three Estate Residential to Residential Plan Development. Okay. Patrick, you have that for us?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The applicant, Mapleview Investments LLC, is requesting rezoning of approximately twenty point one three acres located in Land Lot ninety-two, Tenth District of Carroll County. Said tract is further described as being located on Mapleview Drive, parcel C zero eight zero three three zero one nine seven. The rezoning request is from ER three, which is our estate residential three acre lot size, three acre plus lot size, to residential plan development. The applicant is requesting the rezoning in order to construct subdivision with eighty three single-family residences. Property is located in the northwest portion of the Maple Street Commons Development, the end of Mapleview Drive. Site contains some infrastructure from the original development, which was constructed in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. Site contains roads, curbing, gutters, water lines, and sewer lines. Property is mostly cleared from the original grading permit, which was issued back in two thousand and six with tree canopy growth along lot lines and in the center of the property. Property is surrounded by dense tree canopy and single-family homes to the north and west, and commercial development to the south. Property is located in close proximity to the University of West Georgia and Carrollton City Schools. If you were to look in your City of Carrollton Comprehensive Plan, it would show the area as residential on the plan's future land use map. Again, existing land uses to the north is R twenty, which is the Heritage Hills subdivision, C two General Commercial, which is the Maple Street Commons Development, ER three to the east and to the west is Carroll County A Agricultural and Carroll County R three Single Family Residential with a half acre minimum per lot. Property was first annexed into the city in August of two thousand and five as part of a larger mixed-use development consisting of various types of commercial and residential styles and uses named Maple Street Commons. Site plan, grading plan, and erosion control plan was submitted under the name Trey Robinson and was approved by the city in October of two thousand and six. Original site plan proposed eighty-six single-family residential lots with amenities, including a volleyball and basketball court, pool, picnic area, and clubhouse. And then again, in two thousand and nineteen, ER Horton submitted a rezoning request to residential plan development for this tract for its seventy-five lot single-family subdivision. It was denied by the mayor of council in June of two thousand and nineteen. Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this rezoning request by Josh Chapman on behalf of Mapleview Investments LLC for the twenty point one three acres. Applicant intends to develop eighty-three single-family homes. Recommendation for approval was a contention upon the site plan as presented, which includes four point one units per acre, which equates to the eighty-three lots, open and recreational space with amenities, which included a pool and playground, setbacks, zero front, side, and rear setbacks, which is minimum structure separation per our building code, and then fifty-foot rear landscape buffers adjacent to properties located in the Heritage Hills subdivision. This recommendation came from the Planning Commission with an eight oh vote. I believe also, Mr. Grizzard, you wanted to mention something about hydrology.
I've only had one call about this rezoning, and I wouldn't say it was negative, it was just an inquiry. Back when they were doing the mass grading, they let the silt control get away from them, and I remember they flooded Jimmy Sanders' yard with silt. The number sticks in my mind, it was twenty-one thousand dollars to clean up the silt, that was a lot of money for a mud cleanup, but I, I don't think there's any problem with the hydrology, but I would like to ask as a condition of zoning that they check the hydrology under the standard that it was built to at the time. I think John Bass did the work, and I just think it'd be prudent if he checked the hydrology. I don't anticipate a problem, but just to be doubly sure, and again, I think what happened, whenever that was, more than a decade ago, I really think it was a silt management problem, not a stormwater problem, but I think it'd be prudent that, that he look at those numbers again.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Patrick. Okay. Do we have anyone here to speak for or against this proposal? Okay. Um.
We got somebody here.
Oh, well, I know y'all are here, but, yeah, I think you probably are. We have Mr. Josh Chapman and Mr. Ben Garrett here, who represents this group. Is there any questions? Does anybody have any questions or discussion about what's going to be done? I think this is going to be a great development. It's on the west side of our city, and people will be able to come out and just get on the bypass and, you know, go around and go to either direction that they need to go, and I think that this definitely will help us with some housing issues. So, that's another great plus, and these people are well-known in our community and do a great job in their buildings. All right. Do I, okay?
Yeah, I'd ask, I've got one or two questions. One is, in your proposal, you talk about having an adjacent senior care facility. Can you tell us more about that?
Not much. Because we can't divulge that yet, but yes, our plan.
Can Bob get in? If it, can Bob get in it?
There, there's some adjacent commercial property that we intend to make the whole community a senior community. It won't require rezoning, it's currently zoned. And as we say that, this is one of the requests to be part of that global picture, but we're not expecting solely senior living. It will be open for.
Well, and if I did move in, I'd definitely want the playground and the pool. No, it, it does sound like an exciting project. I'm happy for Ian. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve it.
Okay. I have a motion? Do I have?
I have one quick question. Are you okay? Are you guys okay with Tim's recommendation?
Absolutely. And want to make sure. And want to make sure it's good. We've done some research in that and agree with the statement Mr. Grizzard made about erosion control, but we are absolutely going to make sure everything's proper.
Any other questions? So, the motion would be to rezone, to grant the rezoning with a stipulation of the.
Just rerun the hydrology, but under, not, but under the standard that it was built to at the time.
All right.
So moved.
Okay. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have vehicle purchases for Parks Department trucks. We have Mr. Tony here to present that to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item seven on the agenda tonight for your consideration is a purchase of two vehicles for the Parks Department. We solicited pricing from our local dealers. They're requesting a one-ton dual rear-wheel, four-wheel-drive extended cab truck with service utility kit. And the prices came back from Thornton GMC at forty-seven thousand sixteen dollars, Pugmire Ford fifty-two thousand two hundred one dollars, and no bid returned from Mike Bell Chevrolet. And the second vehicle was a mid-size SUV. Thornton GMC returned a price for a Terrain, GMC Terrain, at twenty-three thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. And Pugmire Ford returned a bid for a Ford Explorer at thirty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars, and Mike Bell again returned no bid. City staff recommends you award, or requests that you award these purchases to both, to Thornton GMC, the low bidder, both cases. They will replace current vehicles that will come out of service. And this will be paid for out of the Parks Department.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Tony. Tony always does a great job, and I don't, I know he's done his homework and research, and this, we have a motion to grant these purchases, or do we, do we need a motion? We do. Okay. All right. So, do I have a motion to grant the purchases of the vehicles for the Parks and, Parks Department?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Triplet, our two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Wow. That's hard to think about, two thousand twenty-two.
Time gets away, doesn't it?
It does. It does.
You have before you in your agenda packages, a copy of the proposed twenty-two budget, and also separate binders that were provided to you tonight. A couple of housekeeping items that I would like you to make aware of. For the first time since we installed our software package in two thousand and five, we have upgraded our financial software, and this is the first budget cycle that we have done under our N code ten financial package. And I think if you'll look at the budget worksheets have somewhat of a new look, it's an improved look. If you'll notice, the comparison of the current year budget and the proposed budget, they are shaded amounts, so it's easy to see. And if you recall, the worksheets from previous years had a dollar change, but it did not identify a percent change up or down, the new does, and so I think it discloses a little more information and makes it easier to make analysis on the, the department and the line item budget worksheets. One more housekeeping item, we are still getting used to the formats and a little bit how this, the new software works. And on page seven of your budget document, I believe it's Department one oh three Engineering, we inadvertently left out the total page, and it was just where it totaled out for that department. And so, I made a quick black and white copy of that page, three-hole punched it and put it in your budget document just for reference purpose, and so we apologize for that. We'll have that corrected by your final consideration at the July meeting. With that being said, our proposed budget for our three operating funds, the general fund, the water fund, and the sanitation fund, total fifty-four million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars, and that represents a total increase of eighty-seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars, point one six percent over our current and final FY twenty-one budget of fifty-four million, seven ninety-three, three eighteen. So, we can safely say we have got a break-even budget that we're proposing to you. A couple of reasons for that, if, if you remember the last year or two, we've been fairly heavy in capital-type items, equipment, property purchases, and so we're going into a year where, equipment-wise, we're in good shape, we don't have any big equipment purchases that we need to make, we're not aware of any property purchases on the horizon at this time, so that is, I think, one of the main reasons that we're able to hold this budget at a break-even point. Just like everybody else, when the COVID pandemic hit in February, March of this year, we did not know how we were going to finish out the year financially, and we're still, you know, three weeks away from that. But we have, we have weathered the pandemic exceptionally well. Our local economy continues to do very well, our property taxes, our excise taxes, our sales taxes, all have been, been great. And I think, as Tim mentioned in his transmittal memo, it's been a partnership of the city, the business community, the individuals, and without that partnership pulling together, I think it's the main reason that we're financially strong as a city today. Without spending too much time, I just want to just highlight just, just a few line items in our general fund revenues. We are forecasting a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase of four percent in our current ad valorem property tax. We're forecasting four point three million dollars. Our tax digest continues to grow and remains strong. One that I want to point out to you, our title ad valorem tax, if you'll look on your budget worksheet, we are proposing a budget of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or seventy percent over our current amount of five hundred thousand. If you remember, last year, the Georgia General Assembly took up legislation to redo or refine the allocation, the distribution formula of the amount that local governments got of this revenue source, split between the state and the local governments. They passed that, and we are getting a lot more money, and I, I want to, I know y'all appreciate our local delegation, Georgia Municipal Association, everyone concerned in getting that legislation through. That helped us greatly from a financial standpoint. We did not quite meet our budget projections on utility franchise, primarily electrical, and that was because a lot of our institutional-type electrical users, like the university, the schools, they were shut down during the pandemic, went to the virtual learning platform, and now that hopefully in-person instruction is resuming and everyone's going back to regular operation, we're confident that that's going to return back to our normal projections. Sales tax, we're increasing, we're forecasting a fifteen percent increase. Five point two million is our projected amount for the new year. Our sales tax just continues to be solid, and we're very blessed and grateful for that. Our beer and wine excise tax is holding steady, in fact, we are forecasting a ten percent increase in that. Occupational tax revenue, new businesses continue to come into the city and open up, we're actually forecasting a six percent increase on that line item. Insurance premium tax on insurance products written and sold in the city, forecasting nine percent increase, that has been a solid performer for our general fund for years and years. Our building permit, just a reflection of the local building and whatnot that's going on in the city, we are forecasting solid growth. In fact, our current year budget's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we feel comfortable in upping that to three hundred thousand dollars, and so we feel like that we'll meet that and even exceed that. As far as intergovernmental revenues, we're still getting the seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollar fire reimbursement for the county, for the city fire crews covering the county fire boundary in certain designated areas. Our county recreation reimbursement, we are forecasting an increase to a hundred and five thousand dollars from seventy-five thousand, and that's where the county reimburses the city for county residents using our city recreation programs. Our nutrition grant revenue for our senior mill programs is solid, we're forecasting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that, that's an eleven percent increase. And then our school board reimbursement, where the school board reimburses us for the salaries and benefits of the school crossing guards and our school resources officer. salaries and benefits of the school crossing guards and our school resources officer, uh, will remain at two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars estimated for the current year. Um, as you realize, as you remember back during the pandemic, we had to shut down the Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. Uh, we lost revenue, obviously, in shutting down those departments, but we also avoided operating expenditures. Um, there is grant money available to reimburse the city for lost revenues in cultural arts and recreation programs, and, uh, those departments are working on grant applications and pursuing reimbursement of that, those lost revenues now. So, going, uh, on the expenditure side, um, the budget proposes a four-point-five percent cost-of-living allowance for full-time employees, we are proposing or projecting an eight percent increase in, uh, group health insurance, and we are projecting a five percent increase for property liability insurance. I will make one quick mention on the property liability, our, our claim rate has been very good. Uh, we added, um, some equipment, um, and, um, you know, in the last year or two, we added the twenty-one, twenty-three take-home police cars. And so basically, the increase, it was eighteen thousand dollar total increase out of a three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-dollar current-year premium. We just added more facilities and equipment on our policy that we had to insure. So we, we've got a good insurance program going, and that's with the GMA. The, um, I say this every year, gasoline, diesel, electric, natural gas, um, with the way things are going in the world, sometimes these things can move up, they can move down in a very short period of time. We, we, uh, budgeted these very conservatively in previous years, and we did not have to increase any of these line items, uh, beyond current year amounts, but, uh, we will monitor, and, uh, if, if we see any sharp spike in increases, um, we will bring those to you and, uh, recommend budget amendments, um, during the coming years. As I said, we don't really have a lot of capital in these operating budgets, especially general fund, um, is, is, and, and so any, uh, necessary capital expenditures that are eligible will be funded through our special local auction sales tax, our SPOS program, Capital Projects Fund. Um, we'd like to emphasize that this budget, uh, does not propose an increase in the millage rate, it, keeping the millage rate exactly where it is. In the water fund, um, we are proposing one-point-eight-nine-six million dollars for water sewer line upgrades, we have that year after year we have to maintain, and that also includes upgrades, specific recommended upgrades to the water filter plant, the wastewater plant. Um, the hotel motel tax special revenue fund, um, that was probably the hardest-hit fund or section of the city's financial, uh, uh, finances during the pandemic. As you can imagine, we, we were closing down businesses, we were not having tournaments, we were not having swim meets, we were not having any kind of, uh, tourism, and the, the hotel motel industry in the city got hit really hard, uh, especially last spring for about three or four months, but they have bounced back remarkably. Um, year before last, uh, the hotel motel tax fund was, um, eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, we reduced that to seven-hundred thousand for the current year. We made a projection of six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, uh, at the beginning of this budget cycle. Um, we kept that six-eighty in there just for, to be conservative, but we feel very sure that we're going to exceed that. Uh, they, they have rebounded very, very, very strongly, and we're, we're, we're thankful for that. The eight percent hotel motel tax is the sole source of funding for this fund, and that basically supports the economic and tourism efforts of the city, Chamber of Commerce, Convention and Visitors Bureau. Um, I will say that the final, this is just the public hearing, you will not vote on this tonight, final consideration of the budget will be at your July twelfth meeting. And so, but, uh, if you have any questions tonight, be glad to answer them, if, uh, you have any questions between now and the July meeting, be glad to sit down with you and discuss at your leisure. So, any, any comments or questions?
Jim, there's a typo, and it's my fault, I should have, I did this sheet for you, and I didn't catch it when I did it, but it's on page eleven, the water and sewer rates.
Oh, yes, sir.
There's a date, it says July one, twenty twenty-one, it should say twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you to your employees. I know this is a lot of work, and they're done that, not by the size, by any stretch of the imagination, but I know dealing with departments, and again, I want to commend our departments, our department heads, they do a great job of staying within their budget, and if you look at their budget, unless it was just some emergency, most of them are under budget. And we appreciate you managing the funds of our citizens in such an appropriate way that, you know, it, it really reflects back at the end of the year of what a great job they do managing, um, getting work done and being able to save some money at the same time. And again, I thank you, Jim, for the great job, and I love the new printouts, I can read it without getting my glasses out, much better, much better.
Just, this is not budget-related, but just an update on N code ten, we've installed financial, accounts payable, payroll, human resources, um, and we're fixing to start the conversion on the utility billing, um, uh, they're starting, doing the prep work right now. We expect to go live on the new utility package at the end of, um, July, and then in September, October, the new package for the Parks and Rec and Cultural Arts, and, um, if we have not lost our mind by then, that should be the end of it.
For those who don't, don't know what N code ten is, it's a, um, computer system, uh, package, uh, software package, um, that gives all the city's, um, funds to gather, all the departments that will be, uh, operating under the same, uh, software package, instead of having one for the cultural arts, one for the parks, one for human resources, one for accounts payable and receivable, so I know they're excited. It's, it's rough getting it converted, but once it's converted and they get the kinks out, you can see it's a great, a great program.
Mayor Kason, if you don't mind, I, I think it'd be appropriate to say right now, I just want to remind everybody, Carrollton has the lowest millage rate of any city in the area by far, way, way lower, in other words, the property taxes are way lower here than anywhere. Uh, our utility rates are lower, and yet they make money, our garbage rates are lower, and our garbage system makes so much money that we use that money to pave our roads with. Every year, the auditors tell me we have the only sanitation system that makes money. And so, they don't always say that publicly, but they always say it to me behind the scenes, so this is a very, very well-run city, uh, those, as Betty said, the department heads do a great job, and on top of that, the level of service is just excellent, we have an excellent recreation department, uh, we have, we have an ISO one-rated fire department, which there are less than two-hundred out of fifty thousand in the nation, and I think we have the best police department in the world, and I know that's on everybody's radar right now, but a lot of the things that you see on national news that they want police departments to implement, Joel Richards has had implemented at this city for over ten years. Uh, if, if a use of force is required, I mean, even physical force, that is reviewed by an outside group. Uh, if anything, again, unpleasant does happen, that gets a lot of review and a lot of scrutiny. The training that these officers have is very expensive, so when we talk about the, you know, the, the cost of a police budget, that is not bullets and guns, that is the, the training and the equipment for them to do their job right, and to be good to the public, and treat the public well, and treat the public as gently as they can, and not get themselves hurt in the process, that's expensive. And so I could just go on and on about how good all the departments here, again, our utilities are our goose that laid the golden egg, Tony's sitting there very humbly, but our utilities make a lot of money, we transfer six or seven million dollars at least out of the utilities into, uh, the general fund, and that keeps your taxes low, so I just think it's appropriate, is you hear these, uh, bu, about this budget and these budget numbers, and the fact that we kept this budget, budget flat, um, that your level of service is extremely high, and your cost is very low, and we're very proud of that.
And I want to say, uh, in the police budget, the comment was made that, you know, that maybe we could take the million dollars, but the thing about it is, is under that umbrella, there is our new crisis mobile unit, which, um, the city of Carrollton, uh, along with Carroll County, funds the, um, police officer, uh, that is in that unit. And the police department does a lot, they don't just arrest people, they do, uh, community events, they do, uh, they're just the best PR for the city. And, um, and while we're on the police department, would you please stand up, Councilman Ogden, and let's show this shirt? This is our, um, Rob Holloway, our officer that was, um, severely injured, um, a month or so ago, and his back-
April twelve.
April twelve, yeah. And his badge number is two-two-nine, and so we have some, they have some T-shirts, um, supporting him and his family, and, and it's our understanding that he is doing good, he's still got a long way to go, um, but just keep that family and all the officers, uh, that were injured that day in your thoughts and prayers. Okay, moving on to board appointment, Patrick, for the Historic Preservation Commission?
Thank you, Jim, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council tonight, your consideration is a memo from staff advising you that Christie Garrett's term on the Historic Preservation Commission will expire, and has expired as of, uh, May first, twenty twenty-one. She has served one full term and would be eligible for reappointment to a second and final term, should that be your desire this evening. Christie has an expressed, has expressed an interest in continuing to serve on the commission, her input has been insightful and valuable, Christie and her husband are also proud residents in the in-town South Historic District.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion for reappointment?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Um, is there any discussion or other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries, okay, we have board appointment for the Arts Commission?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and Mayor and Council, again, the Arts Commission respects, respectfully requests that the Mayor and City Council reappoint the following members to the Arts Commission, Lori Fleck, Clint Samples, Michelle Connerly, and Andrea Chapman. If reappointed, their terms will begin July first, twenty twenty-one, and continue through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Okay, uh, we'll revert back up to our Mayor and Council announcements or comments, and we'll start with Councilman Bridges.
No comments.
No comments tonight? Mr. Ogden?
Well, thank you for, uh, recognizing the, uh, shirt that I'm wearing tonight, and, uh, I wear it, uh, in honor of Rob Holloway and our, our city police department. I, I will add that, uh, right before I came in, I was watching the news, and, uh, a former Carrollton police sergeant that's now the chief of, uh, police in Harrelson County, or the sheriff of Harrelson County, Stacy Williams, was on TV, and they'd made a big arrest, uh, at the Welcome Center for human trafficking, and somebody, uh, I, I didn't catch the details, but it was, I believe, five people for, uh, trafficking kids.
Wow.
And, uh, congratulations to him, and, and, uh, he was, he was a great policeman when he's here, and they're lucky to have him up there.
That is good. Okay, Mr. Ledbetter?
Uh, I don't have very much tonight, but I would like to say that I am excited about all the activities that are going to be available to the residents of Carrollton and Carroll County at the AMP this summer.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we've missed out on all of that that was going on, but there's been improvements made to the AMP, like a new screen's been installed that'll allow them to have movies before it gets dark, and, um, there's going to be a lot going on at the AMP, please check out the website, and, uh, attend as many events as you can, so, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Waters. Well, I'll just say, um, that I, from Mayfest, uh, when I was walking around just talking to people, uh, we had, everybody was just so thankful to get out, and I've had the question asked, asked several times, when is the AMP going to open? When is the AMP going to open? And Friday night, we had a movie, so, um, this, there's a schedule online of the children's movies, and I think they've got three concerts and maybe a few other events, I'm not sure, but, um, something for all ages. The other thing, uh, is our Fourth of July parade, and it will be on July third, okay? And, huh?
Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday, July third. Uh, the other thing we have coming through our city is the bike ride across Georgia, uh, they will be here tomorrow, Wednesday, and leave on Thursday, I think.
Wow.
Yeah, so, um, another good economic boost for our city, and we appreciate, um, them choosing to stay here as our overnight stay, they'll be at the Carrollton High School for those that want to camp out, and of course, I guess there's some of those that would like to stay in hotels, so maybe our hotel motel tax will go back up.
Watch out for bicyclists.
Yes, please be aware of the bicyclist, uh, that will be in town, and I think they're having something at the AMP one night, and I-
They are, and Carrollton is the only city that they're spending two nights in, and the reason for that is because we have so many things to offer. Um, the green belt is a draw for them, um, along with all the other things in our area, so, proud of that, but.
Yeah, we're, we're very proud.
I do have something to say, I know it was something I forgot. Um, I will be having a, closing the community, for the community on June the twelfth, it start at twelve o'clock to six o'clock at two fifteen, Fourth Street, West Legend Park, it's for the entire community. We will have food that they could take home with them, non-perishable items, we also will have hamburgers, hot dogs, the kids can wear the bathing suits, we're going to have a wet jumpy house, also the dry one. Um, we're going to be representing and dedicating Ora Bear Clark, a foundation land in the community for forty-six years, a gospel radio station in the city of Carrollton, and, um, she will be getting a plaque at that time, um, and we invite everybody to come out, it's free, everything is free. I got a truckload of donations today, I'm excited about that, so we got to have some people to give it to, so you're welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Bridges. Councilman Bridges does an excellent job of holding true to her statement, unity in the community, and she does a, a great job with, um, reaching out to help people that need help and trying to bring, um, good things to our city. Okay, Mr. Grizzard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm trying to make this quick, uh, it's a strange time, uh, to try to procure material, and we're, we're having trouble even getting those, uh, rubberized speed bumps that we're trying to install over in the west side for Miss Jacqueline, uh, but just know we're, we're on top of that, we're out to bid on the first phase of, uh, uh, Lake Carroll, the, the shoreline over at the boat docks, it, uh, project that, uh, Mr. Ledbetter spearheaded, and we're real excited about that. Uh, we're going to do a sidewalk along Brown Street that will tie Stewart Street, uh, all the way to the library, you'll be able to walk all the way to the library, so that's something we're working on, you're going to see start in the next few weeks. Um, and then, we're not quite out to bid yet on the city hall renovations, but that is coming rapidly, but there's a lot of construction we're planning and a lot of things, uh, going on that I think your citizens are going to enjoy. And I finally listened to you guys and did something with this- And I finally listened to you guys and did something with this HVAC system, Randy Williams and, uh, Jeremy, uh, I can't think of his last name, but he's our electrician, but they put a variable frequency drive on this thing so it doesn't bark when it starts off and it doesn't blow as loudly, so we're thankful for that.
Very.
Maybe we didn't just get some WD-40 for it.
I tried that, I tried soap on the belt, but it, I thought the soap was too expensive, so I didn't want to do that either, so.
Check out your cultural arts, um, programs, our recreation programs this summer, we've got a great, great activities for kids and adults and, uh, we want everybody to have a fun, safe summer. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, meeting adjourned.